Thank you for being here this evening. We'd like to go ahead and call the City Council Regular Meeting to Order. At this time, we're going to have Reverend Arnold Jackson from Mount Moriah Community Church offer our invocation, after which Councilman Bridger Kimball will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please stand.
Let us bow our heads in prayer, please. O God, our Creator and Sustainer, we come to you on this City Council meeting this evening, asking that your presence be among us. We pray that each item on the agenda would be worked according to your will and according to your way. We ask that the individuals that have to make presentations this evening would be guided and be led by you. Be in this meeting, especially since it's the first official, formal meeting since the elections, and we pray that each individual would be guided and would be led by you. Bless us during this holiday season of Christmas, of Kwanzaa that is coming up, and Hanukkah, and all these things we ask, in the name of the Father, in the name of the Son, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and the Holy Spirit. And we all said, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Great, thank you very much. That'll take us to the roll call, please.
Councilmember Chavitos.
Here.
Councilmember Kimball.
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Here.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. We do have a proclamation, or, excuse me, it's not a proclamation, it's an award to present tonight. The Fire Department has been very, very patient with me, as we have been exceptionally busy since, let's say, August, when they were awarded this award, but we did want to get around to it, and we wanted to definitely say, "Thank you, they've done a great job." I'm going to invite Assistant Chief Bobby Miller up, as well as anyone else from the Fire Department who'd like to receive this. This is for the premier-level agency known as the Premier EMS Agency Program. And Bobby, would you tell us a little bit about what this award is?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Bobby Miller. I'm the Assistant Chief of Operations, and this is a really exciting thing for us, because we get to celebrate some of the work that some of the behind-the-scenes people do, specifically Cindy Enskeep, who years ago started a records management system, Image Trend, so we could track, better track of our, I'm trying not to use acronyms, so EMS, Emergency Medical Services. Through Image Trend and working with DHS, Arizona Department of Health Services, we were awarded, because of the work of Cindy Enskeep, a premier EMS provider, and that means for the citizens of Maricopa, that you can be assured that through the Fire Department, that you get top-notch medical treatment in our response areas, that we have an oversight area, that we participate in record-keeping, and that we are on track with national trends in EMS emergency services. I'm very excited, because Cindy really appreciates the limelight. She many times will be found, "Look at me, look at me, look at me." It's really torture for her, which we find huge delight in. So Cindy, if you would come up, and we can give you your award.
Congratulations to our Fire Department, especially to Cindy Enskeep, and all those who worked so hard on that. We really appreciate it. It's a lot of work. That takes us, at this time, to the report from the mayor. As many of you heard before from previous council members, I had the opportunity as well to participate in the, as the emcee for the Maricopa Shark Tank, which was hosted by MCE, which is the Maricopa Center for Entrepreneurship. This is a wonderful experience in which we got to hear from a variety of different of our youth on how to create a business, and there were some really interesting ideas, and so I hope we'll get to see more of that in the future. I think it was something very surprising, because I didn't, I don't know, I didn't know what to expect, but in the end, I was absolutely flabbergasted. And so, you know, the purpose of a Center for Entrepreneurship is to come up with new ideas and basically grow something homegrown into something large, and so I hope that we'll see many great things coming from folks that are willing to do that in the future. Also, we had the opportunity for the For Our City Shop With a Cop program. I had the opportunity to go to Walmart with many children this year. I think it was 32, 36 children, that really needed some help, and the For Our City group helps to raise donations and acts as the third-party liaison to the MPD, or Maricopa Police Department. They were there at Walmart and at McDonald's that morning, and were able to do much shopping for their families, and it truly was a magnificent event. Fire also had their Toys for a Ride, as you heard before. I was able to participate in that. I'm not sure if my children or me were more excited about riding in the fire truck, so that was always interesting, and I did see lots of other adults that were probably more excited than their children, and so they were more than happy to purchase a toy and bring it, so they got to go for a ride in the fire truck. And I know that all they really wanted to do was play with the lights and sirens, which they also got to do, so that was a good thing as well. We also had the, I had the opportunity to attend the ADOT meeting in Tucson. I wanted to announce that former mayor of Maricopa, Kelly Anderson, is now the official chair of the State Transportation Board. That's really impressive. That's a really impressive thing. I also got to sit next to Supervisor Smith, and so I had put a post on Facebook saying that between myself, Mayor Anderson, and former Mayor Smith, now Supervisor Smith, I think we had this transportation thing covered, so we're closing in on them. They can't get away from us. At the same time, we also wanted to let you all know that we are always looking for volunteers for boards, committees, and commissions. The city clerk, and along with our graphic designers and Ruben, put together this fancy little brochure. Maybe you saw it in the audience, maybe you didn't, but it talks about what is a board, or committee, or commission here at the city of Maricopa, what they do, what their responsibilities are. I think so often, people ask me, "How do I get involved?" And when I say, you know, "Please get involved in a board or commission," they think, "Oh, I'm going to have to be there every day, you know, and every night," and that's just not the case. However, you are an invaluable member of our team, and we can't do this job without you, and so I would encourage you to pick up this little pamphlet or brochure, take a look at it, learn how you can be of use to the city and to your community, and give back a little bit. We really do truly take your recommendations, and we can't do it without you. That being said, at this time, we have a commission that is open, called the Nonprofit Funding Committee, and this is the committee that will vet all of the nonprofits who wish to participate in the upcoming budget discussions for the city of Maricopa. This is an opportunity in which the city takes 1% of its budget and gives it back to the community. Sometimes in past years, we haven't given it all, just based on budgetary restrictions, but we do look to help those nonprofits that are perhaps struggling, or wanting to succeed, or are a startup, and so we really do want to help out in any way, shape, or form we can. And so this committee is the one that will look through these and scrutinize them and make recommendations to council. So if you are interested in doing that, we would really prefer that you contact the city clerk, Vanessa Boras here, put in your application, and we're really on a time crunch here, so if you can do that here before, really, the end of December, and especially as things get busy, and before you forget, we'd really enjoy that. So please, please participate in that fashion. And then last but not least, I wanted to say that tonight is unfortunately our last night for Micah Miranda to be our Economic Development Director, and so we wanted to have him stand. Micah, whenever I can embarrass staff, I do it. Micah has accepted a position at the city of Chandler. I've told him he is not allowed to give away all of our trade secrets, and so anyways, we are very excited for him. It will be a wonderful opportunity. We are deeply, deeply appreciative for everything that you have done for us in the past two and a half years, two years. And, you know, one of the things you guys don't understand is that economic development works behind the scenes as kind of the quarterback in making sure that development services and all these different agencies, police and fire, work together to create the potential for a new business to even, even arrive here. And so it's a tedious, tedious job. It's pretty much 24/7, and Micah's done a stellar job for us. So again, thank you, Micah. And that concludes my report. Thank you. We'll turn the time over to City Manager Rose for his report.
I'm the mayor and councilman, so I just wanted to echo the mayor's comments regarding Micah's outstanding performance. He will certainly be missed, not just as a member of the executive team, but certainly as a valuable contributor to the community. I think that he has a clear vision and real leadership skills, and so, you know, it's certainly our loss, but I begrudgingly wish him well in his future endeavors. Certainly, I wish that he were going to continue here with us in Maricopa, and I'm sure I speak for the rest of the executive team as well.
Thank you very much.
Are there additional items to report, Your Honor?
Appreciate it. That takes us to the Call to the Public. At this time, I do have a speaker card first for the Call to the Public, and so we'll go to that speaker card first, after which all are welcome to approach the podium. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or under. We have a timer there for your convenience, as well as that this is a time in which you can tell the City Council what's on your mind, but we don't typically respond, as this is not agendized for a back-and-forth discussion. However, if we can, you know, help you with getting you the right contact person with staff, or agendizing it for a future agenda, we'll do so. So at this time, I wanted to offer the opportunity to Barry McCann. Is it McCann or McCain? Barry, are you here?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see Barry at the moment, so if he comes back before the end of Call to the Public, we'll welcome him up to the podium. If not, we'll move ahead. At this time, if you wish to approach the council, you may do so. Please state your name.
Jolie Booth. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Jolie Booth, and I'm from the NYRC SAG Club, the subcommittee, committee of the Newly Found Be Awesome Youth Coalition. For the past year, we have been promoting our Y21 campaign to let our peers and community know why the legal age is 21. There are several physical development risks, including brain development issues, as well as accidents and issues with school achievement. This year, we want to focus on a more positive approach. We want to highlight the youth who do not use drugs or alcohol, because they far outweigh the ones who do. We have collected pictures of local youth sharing their favorite substance-free activities, and created this Above the Influence poster, celebrating the youth who do not use drugs and alcohol. Tonight, we have brought you a copy of the poster, and we hope that you will consider a place you can display it with pride. Thank you for the city of Maricopa's continued support of our youth.
Thank you very much. Please state your name.
My name is Kiona, and, hi, Mr., hi, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. I am pleased to tell you that according to the 2014 Arizona Youth Survey, eighth graders reported that in the last 30 days, 76.8% did not use alcohol, 88 of eighth graders did not use cigarettes, and 88.2% did not use marijuana.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. I am William Rowe. I am pleased to tell you that according to the 2014 Arizona Youth Survey, 10th graders reported that in the last 30 days, the 71.3% of students did not use alcohol, 87.5% did not use cigarettes, and 84.4% did not use marijuana.
Great.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Joseph Montalvo, and I am pleased to tell you that, that according to the 2014 Arizona Youth Survey, high school seniors reported that in the last 30 days, 69.1% did not use alcohol, 84.5% did not use cigarettes, and 75.6% did not use marijuana.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Genevieve Burnell. We would like to invite you and members of the community to our first general meeting of the Be Awesome Youth Coalition at the Maricopa Youth Recreation Center at Maricopa Elementary School on January 15th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. We are looking for sector reps and members who can help us increase the number of youth not using substances and assist them in meeting their full potential. Thank you for your time, and we hope to see you there.
And what was the date again? The date and the time?
January 15th, from 6:00 to 7:00.
Thank you very much. And that was at Maricopa Elementary School, correct? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Anyone else at this time wish to approach the council? Gina?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Maricopa community. I would like to invite you to a special event this Saturday at the Recycling Association of Maricopa, at 46250 West McDavid Road. My name is Gina Diabella, and I operate the Recycling Association of Maricopa there. We are sponsoring a holiday eco gift boutique. You may have wondered, what happens to all that recycling that comes into our facility? Well, sometimes we have very creative and ambitious artists that take advantage of all the resources we have, and make beautiful creations from your recycled bottles and cans, metal, and other items that come into our facility. So that you can see these beautiful creations, please stop by from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and maybe you'll get some ideas for our art recycling contest for April 2015. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the Call to the Public, and move on to the minutes. That takes us to Item 7, 7.1 and 7.2. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please? Have a motion, is there a second?
Yes. I was not here on December 1st, so do I recuse myself?
Legal, I don't think that you have to, but it's up to Dennis.
Mr. Mayor, you're correct. She does not have to recuse herself. She can still vote on him. She can if she wants, but she can still, she's still allowed to vote on him.
So it's your choice. Okay. At this time, we have a motion and a second, correct, I believe, from Councilmember Van Freddy. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to Item 8. There are no public hearings at this time, and then on to the consent agenda, and items that are found on numeral nine here, 9-1 through 9-6. So can I have a motion to approve consent, please? Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the consent? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And that takes us to the regular agenda, Items 10.1 through 10.10. At this time, we'll go ahead and start with Item 10.1, which is the mayor and council shall discuss to possibly take action on making appointments to the Maricopa Youth Council. This is for discussion and action, and I'll turn it over to Rocky first, after which I have a few comments.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's one of my favorite nights of the year. It's time for our annual youth council appointments for 2014, 2015. It's hard to believe, but this is actually our fifth year doing the Maricopa Youth Council, and we keep getting wonderful kids applying each year. I just wanted to share with you historically how we got to tonight, so you can know where we're at. On August 5th, the Maricopa City Council voted to amend the Youth Council Guide. One of the major pertinent amendments we made is that now the selection process is comprised of each member of the mayor council appointing two team representatives to serve on the board. Now I can say that I need to officially pass the torch. I have Heather Lozano. She's our new youth programs coordinator. We're reluctantly passing it along. I hold the youth council very near and dear to my heart, but we've definitely hired somebody to take this group and build it, and do more wonderful things, and build on the current success, so I'm going to turn over to her to let you guys know where we're at today.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. So in November, we had 14 applicants join us for an introductory meeting, and at that event, we had, we couldn't leave without having a project in mind. So tonight, we stuffed 18 Copa Care boxes for homeless people with one night of planning and very little advertising. We've already participated in Shop With a Cop last Saturday. We've judged holiday homes, and we're helping with the For Maricopa Christmas Carnival this Saturday, before they were even appointed. So we have 14 applicants excited to make an impact in the community this year, and each of them bring a unique insight with them to the youth council.
At this time, wanted to do a couple of things here. If it's okay with council, we, as, there are 14, and two appointments per, if council would accept the idea to move the slate, which would make it a little easier, rather than us trying to each pick two. Okay? So that being said, prior to a motion, I did want to offer the opportunity for each applicant to please stand up and be recognized. If you'd remain standing until all of them have been called, I wanted to go ahead and read each person's name. So I wanted to start here with, oh, sorry, now, let me rephrase that. I'll start one at a time. Kaitlin Barnes. Kaitlin, you're here? Excellent. Eden Castellanos. Samantha, Samantha Corales. Katania Dzajowski. If I butchered that, I apologize. Sorry. Courtney Finger. Evan Grace. Bianca Guzman. Alexandria Harris. Alyssa Hollingsworth. Natalia James. Alexis Lozano. Austin Pierce. Kailani Pignon. And Fiona Teponce. And with that, that makes up our current youth council. Can I have a motion to approve, please? A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Yes, and we also wanted to do a picture with the council, as well as the new youth council, so if you'd all join me down there, please. take action to approve subdivision case number SUB 14-02, a request for replat of existing dignity medical campus plat. This is for discussion and action.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Real quickly, for the new council members, my name is Rudy Lopez, Senior Planner for the Plan Division here. Mayor and council members, as stated, this is a request to replat an existing property within the city. It's actually where the Maricopa Station is being built, to divide that into two different properties. The process and requirements for the application has met all the city standards in terms of subdivision plating. With that, staff recommends, as stated in the staff report, to consider the application for approval. If there's any questions, staff will be happy to answer those.
Seeing none, I would accept a motion to approve, please. Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the action? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rudy. Item 10.3. We're going to discuss to possibly take action on a request by the purchasing manager to approve expenditures exceeding $25,000 and previously approved limits for fiscal year 2015 pursuant to the City Purchasing Code. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The item, and for your consideration, discussion and action today, is to allow the city to purchase in aggregate over $25,000 throughout the fiscal year. The purchasing code requires that if any expenditures in aggregate over $25,000 with any one vendor, we get council's approval to be able to do that. With the two items here, you will see throughout the fiscal year, there will be some vendors that we do bring to councils, in front of council for approval. We do anticipate, we try to anticipate the best we can on purchases of repairs and maintenance and tires and machinery and equipment the best we can. Sometimes, things happen, and the expenditures need to go over the aggregate for a certain vendor, and so we will come back to council throughout the fiscal year to be able to ask for an increase, and be able to keep the operations for fleet or for any of the departments going. For instance, here, for VIP Auto Tire Services Fleet uses them a lot for tire services, and non-warranty services for our vehicles, and then also with the Arizona Machinery Company Parks Maintenance, and fleet, and police, use them a lot for different parts and purchases. And as we've gone through the fiscal year, we've come up to that $25,000 limit in aggregate for the vendor itself, so I am asking for council to, their action on being able to go above and beyond the $25,000, but not above $50,000. And if we do see, if there is an emergency or to see the expenditures that may go above the $50,000, we will come back to council and ask for council to, for an increase if need be. With that, any questions?
Questions, council?
Mr. Mayor, in reading the agenda item, you didn't read the entire piece, so... Mr. Mayor, in reading the agenda item, you didn't read the entire piece, so...
Yes, we don't always have to read every piece.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we're just talking about these three. That's what I mean, as opposed to a blanket.
Yes. Okay, so from the standpoint of the cumulative annual purchases in excess of $25,000 with Arizona Machinery Company, VIP Auto Tire Services, yes, that is, that's what's been brought to council, so that would be the only approved method in which to go about that, because it does go through the purchasing agreement. Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Brian. Council, with your permission, I'd like to move item 10.5 next and go through that discussion, and then save item 10.4 for the following item, as we may need a new session on that. And so if we have permission, we'll go ahead and do that. So let's move to item 10.5 first. The mayor and city councilors are here. Presentation by Greg Schwartz from Piper Jaffray regarding the city's primary property I think we surprised him.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor and council is looking for Greg Schwartz. He's our financial advisor with Piper Jaffray. We contract with Piper Jaffray for, to advise on certain things with, that city operates with. And today, tonight, he is here to present on the primary property tax and how it affects all of Arizona, but also the city of Maricopa, and kind of to talk about the 1% limit and how that affects everything going on.
Perfect. Thank you. Greg, I'm sorry, I knew that this is a scary topic, but I didn't think we'd scare you out of the room, so...
Yeah, well, I, sorry, I just had to use the restroom, but got back here as quick as the process would allow. I'm going to try to, you know, keep this quick and brief tonight. For those of you who are really, you know, want to go through Arizona's tax system and understand it first, I feel sorry for you. And secondly, that is, it's important to understand certain nuances, but it's not important to understand every nuance. So with that said, the presentation that you have in front of you this evening, I'm going to, I hope that I can convince you to take away essentially five major takeaways. The first of which is why I'm here tonight. The city of Maricopa is losing and will continue to lose voter authorized primary property taxes that were authorized by voters for public safety. So that's the first takeaway. You will, you are now and will continue to lose property tax revenues. And again, they were voter authorized, and they're dedicated to public safety. The second takeaway is that Arizona's tax system has various limits, various restrictions. Some of those limits and restrictions conflict with one another and cause unintended consequences. And Maricopa is one of several communities that falls into that column of unintended consequences. So there's a myriad of things that drive our property tax system, and it was never intended to have Maricopa or the other communities lose money. The third point, the number of local governments that are now or will be losing revenue in the future is growing every year. And then finally, point number four is there's a narrow range of solutions, all of which has to include other local governments and the, and an organization called the Arizona Tax Research Association, which, if you're familiar with the state capital, the state capital is, say, right here, and a quarter of a block away is the offices of the Arizona Tax Research Association. And so they have excellent access to the legislature and probably are considered to be the only credible source in the legislative process for any discussion about property taxes. So right off the bat, ATRA, as they're known, has to be included in any discussion. So with that said, I did have five agenda items tonight, unless there's some compelling reason to, I won't go through Arizona's property tax system in great detail, except to tell you nationwide, it is considered the most complex. There are various state budget agencies affiliated with each state, and Arizona proudly wins the award every, so often when it's given for the most complex tax system in the U.S. And for some of us, Arizona's tax system is, I consider it, and as well as others, to be not only confusing, but in some respects deliberately misleading when compared to other states. As one example, I don't know how many times you've experienced it, but I've experienced it quite a bit at city council meetings. I'll get somebody from Michigan who just moved here, looks at their tax rate and sees that it's $10 and then the decimal point, and then $10.1234. So it's, it's on this side of the decimal point. It's huge. What they don't understand, that person from Michigan is used to seeing a property tax that is zero on one side of the decimal and only four decimals. Arizona's taxable values are three digits for most homeowners. If you have a $100,000 home, it translates into $100 of taxable value. So our tax rates are large, but our taxable values are small. The end result is that we're still in the bottom 25% for property tax impacts in the U.S. So the system is deliberately, I'll strike that word, the system is complex, needlessly so, and creates knee jerk reactions by people who look at the rates and think they're going to be paying 10 times more than what they were in Michigan, as an example. And again, unless there's a desire for more detail, what I would like to zero in on is the agenda item called the 1% limit, because at the end of the day, there are many nuances that impact why Maricopa's losing revenue, but this is the primary one. So I'm going to skip through some of this other stuff unless, again, there's some, you can email me, I could be more than happy to do a presentation at some other time, but this, this system is, like I said, you really have to be a glutton for punishment to want to understand it. So let's skip right to the bottom line, the 1% limit. The 1% limit is embedded in the Arizona Constitution. It essentially says homeowners are limited in the amount of primary property taxes they pay. There's two property taxes, a primary and a secondary. Primary property taxes are used for operations. Homeowners are limited to paying 1% of the value of their home. So that home, again, we said it was worth $100,000, they're limited to paying $1,000 in primary property taxes to the city, to the county, to the community college, and the school. So some total to all four, it cannot exceed $1,000 in that example. That equates to a $10 rate. So when the combined rate for all primary property taxes for the county, for the community college, for the city, and the school district exceed $10, then the state steps in and does a number of things to reduce that burden. All right. Without going into great detail, the 1% limit is partially offset by, by one thing that continues and one thing that used to be appropriated but no longer is. The one thing that continues is called state aid for education. The state steps in and pays 44% of every school district primary property tax rate. So if a school district has a rate of $10, the state pays 44% of that. So the state funds that. That state aid for education, or SAE, has the practical effect of limiting the number of communities over $10, where the combined rate is over $10. The state steps in, pays 44% of the school rate. They used to appropriate what was known as additional state aid for education, and they haven't for several years. The additional state aid for education was limited to those communities where even after SAE, the rates were above $10. They would step in on select school districts and reduce their rates even further so that Maricopa and other communities wouldn't lose revenue. They have not appropriated, the state has not appropriated additional state aid for education for several years. Presently, there is no authority for the county or the state to reduce your rates. Your rates were voter authorized, your levy was voter authorized. They have no authority to reduce your rates, and they have no authority to reduce your revenues. It's just a vacuum in statutes because of all those conflicting restrictions and limits, unintended consequence. So the bottom line is, the state has already acknowledged that it has no authority to touch your rates. The county has already recognized and acknowledged it has no authority to do so, but they really don't have a choice because the Constitution says homeowners are limited to 1%. So with that said, before I jump into the impact across Arizona, is there any questions? Essentially, the 1% limit, again, is directed at homeowners. They pay 1% of the value of their home. A home worth $100,000, you pay $1,000 total a year. And when the combined tax rate exceeds that, then you start having problems. All right. Unless there's any questions about that, I'm going to go right into the impact across Arizona. The slide I hope you're looking at right now says jurisdictions with combined rates above 10. And this is before state aid for education. So what this list shows you is the number of communities that are getting close to the point that they're losing revenue, but aren't losing revenue right now. Okay? So this is, this is the entire universe of potential problems out there. So in 2010, we had roughly 12 cities. In 2015, we have 31 cities where the combined tax rate exceeds $10. And why is this important? State aid for education, or SAE, is a policy choice. The legislature makes a policy choice. If they want it to be 44% of the school district rate, then it's 44%. That's state aid for education. If they want it to be 20%, it can be 20%. So if they reduce state aid for education from 44% to anything less than that, this is the universe of communities that will be added to the list that are losing revenue. So this problem, if you look at community or counties, it's gone from eight counties to 12 counties in five years. If you look at the number of school districts where this, where the area is impacted, it's gone from 25 to 85. If you look at the number of incorporated areas, it's gone from 15 to 56. I'll explain why it's growing geometrically in a minute, but first, before doing so, the next slide shows you that of that subset of communities that have rates above $10 before the state steps in, here's that subset of communities that still have rates above $10 even after state aid for education. So in 2010, it was six cities, and five years later, it's 12. It was two counties, and now it's five counties. And, and again, I'd like to emphasize that the 44% state aid for education is the only reason why the, the number of communities on here isn't doubled, isn't tripled, isn't quadrupled. At 44%, you get to 43%, Phoenix gets added to this list. You go to 42%, well, the number of communities just grows every time you drop state aid for education. Why is that a concern? We have a structural deficit at the state level. We have a court order that school districts start to get more money. So this may be up, you know, the 44% again is not constitutional. It's simply a policy choice made in the budget each year. So this list of those who are losing revenue right now is likely to grow. And, and the reason why it's growing is, from my perspective, based on the data that I analyze, and it's interesting, I have a very good relationship with the Arizona Tax Research Association. They know I know this, and so occasionally, I'll find a head of a horse in my bed from the Godfather movie. And then the, the director of the Joint Legislative Budget Committee for the legislature lives across the street, and he and I, we see a big tidal wave of problems. And why is the problem growing? The way the pie gets allocated, who pays how much of your levy? So if your levy is $1 million, there's a certain allocation formula to how much businesses pay and how much residents pay. Business properties are paying less now than they did in 2006 because their assessment ratio, part of that nuanced formulas, has decreased from 25% to 10% or 18%. So if a commercial property was worth $1 million, its, its assessed value was $250,000. So that's what that's saying. And then agricultural properties, their assessment ratio is decreasing as well. What that means to you is, if their, if their share of the pie goes down, in other words, they pay less taxes, that means it gets shifted to residential properties. So your problem is growing in large part, not exclusively, but in large part because of the change that the legislature did to the assessment ratios. A second thing that will cause this problem to grow is that there is now a limit to property value growth. There used to be this bizarre formula that your secondary value and your primary value of each property could increase at different rates. All of that is gone. Now, each piece of property can only increase by 5% naturally each year. So that's going to have a practical limitation on your ability to grow your way out of this problem. And then finally, new construction is only going to relieve this problem in the short term. It depends on your mix of residential and non-residential property, and again, it will not resolve this problem in the long term, based on the analytics that we're looking at, that we share with the state. It's difficult to estimate lost revenues to the city of Maricopa, because essentially, the property tax system in Arizona for the year doesn't become set until August of each year. But presently, within this year, within your boundaries, the amount of revenue you're losing depends on how much homeowner property, residential property is in, is as a percent of your total property, how much that state aid for education is stepping in to reduce the Maricopa Unified School District rate, and then the limit, another bizarre limit, that the state aid for education can only benefit up to $600 per residential property. This is bizarre, I know. Just, this is why Arizona gets the most complex property tax system award. We may be 51, including Puerto Rico, we may be 51 on many lists, but we're number one when it comes to complexity of our tax systems. We're estimating, and I would defer to Brian to, you know, provide a better estimate, that your, your annual losses now could range from $750,000 to 1.5 million. Again, that is voter authorized primary property taxes, which the voters authorize to be dedicated to public safety. So this is not a circumstance where this could be considered the fat of government. This is the bones of your government, right here. Potential solutions. The state aid for education could increase. I don't think that's likely, based on the amount of beer my neighbor is drinking, the director of the Joint Legislative Budget Committee. He seems pretty, pretty, pretty worried. The state's structural deficit and that, that school, that the legal decision about school funding makes additional state aid for education, any increase unlikely. We'll be lucky if we can hold it at 44%. Additional state aid appropriations, unlikely. They haven't been appropriated for several years. Legal action, that's possible, but I personally don't recommend it, and here's why. The Arizona Tax Research Association, being a quarter block away from the legislature, has the ability to affect policy here... has the ability to affect policy here better than anybody in Arizona. In 2006, they did something to the property tax system where essentially, communities got to levy, they got to generate revenue based on what their 1979 levy was, with 2% increases annually from that point on. And you didn't have to tax up to the maximum, you could just bank that authority. They took that authority away and the 2006 legislature essentially said, whatever your levy was in 2005 is now your new base, we're getting rid of 1979. Flagstaff, as an example, could have been taxing at a much higher rate, much higher revenue, and was at roughly 60% of that. They lost 40% of their tax base. They went and pursued legal action and got nowhere with it. There were several communities that were affected by that, including Phoenix, Scottsdale. So the point is, legal action, it seems one path, but it's not advisable. There is, amongst other potential solutions, there is this concept of override. As an example, the Maricopa Unified School District has the constitutional and statutory authority to go to voters and ask for a budget override, where it can get additional property taxes paid from the secondary property tax and not the primary property tax. Sorry that Arizona's system is so convoluted, but you essentially shift the burden from a primary, which has limits and restrictions, onto a secondary that doesn't have any limits and restrictions. Penal County has constitutional and statutory authority to seek an override from voters. The community college districts have authority, both constitutionally and statutorily, to seek an override. The only form of government that does not have the authority to seek overrides are cities and towns. The Constitution says you can, but the Constitution says if, as directed in statute. So Constitution says yes, statutes are silent, you have no authority. So that is one potential solution, a solution that is exercised quite frequently by, in particular, schools, less so counties. And from my perspective, the optimal solution is there ought to be some sort of automatic override for communities like Maricopa. And there are some other options that have been considered, like changing the way state shared revenues are allocated. But that involves, you know, getting in a fistfight with Phoenix and Scottsdale. So while likely, you've just got to keep that in mind. So, you know, hate to, hate to sound so negative, but the bottom line is, there are solutions and you'd have to pursue them alongside other municipalities. That list of municipalities that either has the problem now or will in the near future is getting, is growing. So you're not alone. And again, if you want to learn more about the nuances, one, I feel sorry for you. And then secondly, I can do so via email, I can do so via phone call. But the bottom line is, the 1% limit and all the other nuances impose this burden upon you. There is no statutory authority for anybody to reduce your rates, but it's done so just to comply with the Constitution.
Counsel, questions?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Greg, can you, I have two questions, as a matter of fact, if you will. First question is, why is the state been so reluctant to have a TIF, as opposed to other states? We're the only state without a TIF.
And a tax increment financing? There are a few communities in Arizona, Casa Grande, Paci Junction, and Tucson, and a couple of others, that still have the grandfather right to do essentially a tax increment financing. We are the only state, and for that matter, Puerto Rico and the other U.S. territories have TIFs too. So we're actually, there's more entities other than just states, if that's worth it to you. I don't know why we don't have it, but I do know that at the end of the day, there are ways around that. If you truly want, TIF is viewed as a tool for economic development. And there are other tools that if you use them with the same objective in mind, you can get to the same outcome. An example is a community facility district, where there is some of that TIF-like activity going on. As an example, we represent the city of Scottsdale and we used a community facility district to do the waterfront project, which was a several million dollar project. So it's TIF-like, but not exactly like TIF. I can tell you that historically, the legislature has felt that that got too far into the gray area of the constitutional prohibition about gifts from local governments to private entities.
The next one, I guess, is not a question, it's an observation. Alec Pollock, whom I'm sure you know, is well-known in the state as an economist, last Friday spoke to the Penal Partnership Annual Presentation. And every year, he seems to tout the fact that there's more rooftops, more housing, ergo, greater economic growth. And that seems to fly in the face of the property tax in which you've presented here in terms of what the state does as far as taxes and property tax. I don't know how you reconcile his optimism as far as rooftops being the answer.
You know, there was a time when a primary industry in Arizona was growth itself. Growth was a primary industry. But to use terms that you're probably all familiar with, rooftops are a cost center and businesses are a profit center for municipalities. So you break even, I'm sure. I mean, I'd have to talk to Brian to look at your budget, but if it weren't for sales taxes, excise taxes, transaction privilege taxes, it would be very difficult to run a government in Arizona. So in terms of economic growth, you know, rooftops by themselves, unless followed by employment opportunities, are just that, cost centers.
Exactly. Thank you.
Other questions, counsel?
I wanted to follow up on one question regarding the amount of revenues that the city would receive. If a home is built here in Maricopa and that assessed value is at $100,000, what is the amount of property tax money for our primary property taxes that the city would receive based upon our current tax structure?
All right, so just to make it quick, $100,000 home through this bizarre formula gets to $100 of taxable value. So Maricopa's rate is presently 4.98. That's the voter authorized permissible rate, based on a levy authorized by voters in 2005. My estimate is that presently, you're losing, you're not getting, because of this 1% limit, anywhere from 15% to 20% of that rate. It exceeds, in combination with the county, the school, and the college, it exceeds the 1% limit. So you're losing revenue because homeowners are limited to paying just 1% of the value of their homes. So we've estimated it, and when you add all that up, it ranges between 750 to 1.5 million. And again, it depends on a number of factors, but you know, with more precise data that the Department of, Arizona Department of Revenue should have come out with by now but hasn't, we could tell you precisely what the allocation of residential versus non-residential properties are and can fairly definitively tell you what your loss is, what Penal County's loss is, and what the Central Arizona Community College loss is.
Yes, Mr. Wade?
Because I'm not real smart, so I just want to try to find the answer to something. So what do you see as the benefit of this discussion here with us this evening? What do you want us to leave here with?
Okay, I guess the takeaways, first and foremost, this was a voter authorized tax dedicated to public safety. Given the nuances of Arizona's tax system, there's an unintended consequence where you're not collecting the amount of revenue that the voters authorized. The third point is, you need to be part of the conversation to be part of the solution. If you don't engage, in particular, the Arizona Tax Research Association, they will come up with a remedy, not unlike what they did, and I do mean they did it, that's okay, everybody knows they did it, in 2006, where they lowered the levy. It was based on 1979. You got whatever you raised, plus 2% since then, and you didn't have to, you didn't have to set your levy at the maximum. Flagstaff lost 40% of its tax base. Scottsdale lost 15%. So you, they know this is a problem. They know you know it's a problem. You need to engage them as well as the other communities. And again, you go from 44% state aid for education down to say 43 or 42%. Phoenix is on the same list you are.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes?
One is, I'd request that Greg come out and brief you on this issue because it really is a precursor to the budget discussions that we will get into very soon. And I wanted to be clear as to why we struggle with some of our revenue streams. In particular, though, I think that there has to be an effort to change the laws that are in place that appear at least to be anti-growth. And the impact that that has on Maricopa in particular is that it does not provide us with the revenue streams sufficient to provide the services that are required to support those homes, either in public safety or in recreation. And so that's one of the issues. If we're not successful in getting the laws changed, that just is that we have an increased need to diversify our economy. We can't simply be, continue to be a bedroom community and be sustainable.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Very informative. Appreciate it. Okay, that completes item 10.5. That'll take us back to item 10.4. Mayor and City Council discuss the possibility of action on approving recommendations made by the Transportation Advisory Committee regarding the East-West Parkway Corridor Study. I do have two speaker cards for that. However, I will invite staff up to speak first and then we'll turn the time over after they speak to Seth Keeler and Scott Cole.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Pleasure to follow up on the work session item, with this agenda item. Basically, what you heard in the work session was the high level down to some of the minutia on how we arrived at the current proposed alignment for the East-West Corridor, which you see there before you in green. As mentioned by Berwin in his presentation, and subject, I think, of your report and this evening's meeting, is to get direction on two particular items for this corridor, which is the White and Parker Road interchange with the proposed alignment for the East-West Corridor, as well as the interchange or the intersection at 347. So with that, staff is recommending, very similar to the TAC, or very similar to the TAC Advisory Committee recommending this corridor be approved by the City Council tonight. And what that means is that it basically allows, it's not putting this in place permanently, it allows us to move forward to the next step of the study, basically, to go further. And this is generally the alignment we want, let's start looking at some nuances. We acknowledge that the White and Parker, as Berwin presented, the White and Parker interchange and intersection and how you see the roadway, the alignment veering into the Eagle Shadow property to make its approach to cross the current Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway, that interchange can move around, as he had in his exhibit showing the dashed lines. So all of this said, there is a lot more work to do on the project. Your acknowledgement and approval tonight is essentially saying, yes, this is generally the corridor that we would like to see continued for the study. And that's it. With this recommendation for approval, we'd also ask that you provide some direction to staff to continue to work with the developer of the Eagle Shadow property to further refine the concept in an effort to create an acceptable parcel configuration for the land located between the East-West Corridor proposed alignment and the existing Maricopa-Casa Grande alignment. As Berwin presented, you know, right now, we just have kind of an awkward parcel that's created. It might not be the best solution for the development of that parcel and the property owner. Again, that doesn't really matter to staff. We'd prefer that the owner and developer look at that and tell us kind of how they would like to see that parcel configured, given that it really doesn't have any traffic impacts. We'll still review and have traffic engineering and other engineering to review the final alignment that's determined. But we'd like to keep that option open just to continue to refine that, how the East-West Corridor encroaches into their property. They have agreed that, yes, it's going to do this. This is just maybe not the best geometric parcel or shape, and we could move, we could continue with that discussion. Really doesn't have any impact from the beginning of our planning area to that terminus that's currently shown on 347. It's just how exactly would that be configured? And in my conversations with the property owner, that is amenable. So that said, the recommendation would also include some direction to staff to continue to work with the property owners to design, the property owners' design team to coordinate the future roadway intersection designs and alignments affecting the property. That said, obviously, Berwin's here to continue to offer information. I probably won't be able to offer too much detailed information on the design and the history of this project, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Counsel, do you have immediate questions? And if not, then we'll move to the two speaker cards and then we'll probably call you all back up for questions. So Scott Cole and Seth Keeler?
Good evening, Mayor Price and members of the council. My name is Seth Keeler. My address is 1121 West Warner Road, Suite 109, Tempe, Arizona 85284, and I'm with W. Holdings. And I am the property ownership group that is just east of the Action Casino. I submitted a letter of opposition that was read in last council hearing. I appreciate you doing that and it afforded us more time than to visit with staff. We met December 3rd with staff and we were able to go through our, the concerns. We are still not in favor of having our property cut in half with the proposed ending that Irwin had presented, as well as what Dana just talked about. When I asked staff, who's the driver behind this reroute? I was told that it was Action, they want to have it between the casino and also their entertainment complex. I asked them more about this potential road that could go west of the 347, and staff informed me that Action is not committed to anything. There's no guarantee that it would even go west. That's kind of a concern to us. We feel like essentially we're the sacrificial lamb for an idea that may never come to pass. The concerns that we have with this road bisecting our property, we own the commercial piece as well as the transitional piece that's right behind it. It creates a very difficult to develop triangular parcel with the transitional piece. In fact, if you look closely, the Farrell family owned two out parcels along Farrell, we would be left with a triangular parcel that would have these two out parcels within it, even more limiting our development area on that back end parcel. Staff mentioned to me that this is actually a pretty good idea because you end up with two commercial parcels instead of one. I looked into the framework of this parkway and the concerns that we have, as was mentioned by Irwin, this parkway's design is for efficiency. You want to get as much traffic without any impediments on there as you can. What that translates into for a property like myself, if I'm traveling on this parkway and I want to get to the property to the south, I can't do it. If I'm traveling east and I want to get to the property to the north, I can't do it. It is a restrictive parkway. So I don't see this as a win for us, I see this as more of a detriment to us. In the meeting with staff, I was told that, yeah, we do have a rezone PAD and we do have a development agreement, but because we're not at final pl-. have a development agreement, but because we're not at final plat, we're not vested. So I read our development agreement, and it does say that if we get the approval on the rezone, that our development is vested. So we do have a vested property, right adjacent to the Action Casino. It's not just farmland that we're talking about. We are proponents of this principle of the east-west corridor. Part of me is frustrated, because I don't want to be the rain on anybody's parade, but I do see great challenges with what's being proposed by staff. We have looked at a potential alternative concept. Do I have permission to show a map to members of the council? I do, I do have an extra one, there should be an extra. On this exhibit, you'll see that if you keep the parkway on Farrell, and you meander that road after the Action Casino and Entertainment Complex, you can still get to that alignment that was proposed by the community. If in fact, the Action do come forward and want to do that, there is an option to continue that roadway west, and it ends up being to where we don't end up having our property split. Those are the major points I was hoping to cover tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to do so. I can answer any questions at this time, if you have any.
Thank you very much, Seth. Any questions for Seth at the moment? Not, hang tight, because we'll probably have some as we continue the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Scott?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Scott Cole. I represent Hartman Ranch, master planned community on Anderson, north of the Maricopa Casa Grande Highway, and Santa Cruz Ranch, master planned community on Anderson, south of the Maricopa Casa Grande Highway, in the city's planning area. Last time council took up this item, I spoke, and I had two concerns. The first concern was for the Hartman Ranch property, and it dealt with the alternate route in the area of Anderson and Peters and Knoll. Since that last council meeting where I spoke, I've had discussions and met with staff, and with staff's recommendation to eliminate that route from the map that you're potentially approving tonight, my concern is resolved, and I'm in favor of staff's recommendation and action tonight. And I sincerely appreciate and want to thank Dana and staff for factoring in our concerns and working with it on it. The second item I brought up at the last meeting that dealt with this, was dealt with the Val Vista and Anderson Parkway's, south of the Maricopa Casa Grande Highway, which affect the Santa Cruz Ranch development. Now that's not technically on the agenda tonight, but since I mentioned it at the last council meeting I was at, I thought I'd just update you. Since that time, City Manager Rose has agreed to set up a meeting with us to discuss our concerns, and so, again, we're sincerely very appreciative of the city manager agreeing to discuss our concerns with that, and I look forward to doing that in the future. Thank you.
I guess I would ask, I mean, speaking to Seth's comments, Dana, would you like to come up and answer any of those things at this time? As best you can, or?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmembers. My understanding that with regards to the vested rights and the rights for that property are largely dependent on the development, pre-annexation development agreement that was adopted, when that, obviously, prior to that property being annexed into the city. Anyway, I know legal staff has taken a close look at what the effectiveness of that development agreement is. Is this a question that you'd prefer to hear?
Yeah, I mean, I was just looking for help on the comments outlined by Seth, as far as, you know, the swoop down, and how it cuts this property in half, et cetera. And, you know, I guess, I guess, counsel, I would look to legal here, but as we're talking about alignments, I personally would like to possibly go to E-session to discuss this with council a little further, especially considering we have some new members of council, but would look for your support on that, or your ideas on that, so.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to E-session, I really do think there's two issues. One is, have we discussed all the alignment issues, and then we can take up the legal issues in executive session? I didn't know if there was anything more council wanted to hear concerning just the physical alignment issues.
Counsel, anything? Counsel Manchapados.
Just so I'm clear, is the major objection to the alignment continuing down Farrell Road mostly a cultural issue?
That's what's been conveyed to myself. Perhaps Paul, or I was not involved in the discussion on how that movement was created.
Yes, I might do shed some light on that issue. The reason that the alignment deviated from Farrell Road has to do with what is the best route for getting over to Ralston, as I understand it. And our communication with the Occhin community indicated clearly that the extension of the parkway across Farrell, across their property, simply was never going to occur. And so, the alignment that is being proposed, where we do not have an agreement with Occhin at this point, they did seem favorable towards that alignment in our discussions and our intergub. Paul, any, might want to comment on that as well?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in discussions with Occhin, with Jerry Owens, he did reveal to me that they've had a transportation plan for 10 years that showed that quarter-mile alignment south of Farrell. It was not released publicly, we didn't find out about it, until this east-west corridor study came about, and that's when they asked for consideration to bend that, to connect with what road they have had on the drawing board for 10 years. And so, it just seemed to work out. We had never even hoped that this study would allow a corridor to go all the way through. At least, while we don't have any guarantees, with this adaption, there's a possibility, a decent possibility, that we will be able to go to Ralston. If we go straight through the Farrell, as the city manager says, it'll never happen.
Any other questions on the alignments there? If not, can I have a motion moved to E-session, please? Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. We'll return shortly.[1124.74] Agenda item, and at this point, we'll resume the meeting on 10.4. Counsel, do you have additional, any additional questions or thoughts, concerns? Counsel, Omicchappados.
Thank you, mayor. I have a question for Mr. Keeler, I believe, if he's still here. Mr. Keeler, and looking at this alignment and the proposed concept that's on there, in terms of development, are we talking about retail, commercial, a number of different types of entities going in there? Okay. And does that result in your concern being access from north and south points, or east and west as well?
Mr. Mayor, Omicchappados, the uses that are planned, there's two components to this site. The first one is the retail component, which is the one closest to the 347. The other component is the transitional zoning piece. That's a 64-acre parcel that's behind that. The concern that I have regarding access relates to the east-west corridor, getting on to, if this were to be bisected, getting to the north or getting to the south of those two pieces that are commercial.
Okay. And is there anything specific planned for that transitional acreage?
We do not have a site plan on that parcel like we do for the commercial parcel.
Okay. And by we, W Holdings is the entity that's developing this. Do you own this property? Are you representing somebody else? I'm not quite sure I understand.
Okay. So, there are two pieces of property here. We have an investor that owns the property. We have an agreement with Vestar. We've done several of these concepts with Vestar throughout the valley. We come forward with the land, they come forward with the development, and then we give them a discount at the beginning of the deal, and then we are shared with the profit on the back end of the deal. So, Vestar on that front parcel is motivated to be a partner with us because they got such a good deal going into this, and then we're motivated to keep in the deal because then we get to ride the profit on the backside of the development. That's how it works, just a simple model, and we've done this in Gilbert, the crossroads, in Queen Creek, we did Marketplace, in Tucson, we did Oral Valley. Our hurdle was when the market collapsed. Then, a piece like this, it just didn't make sense to move forward, so it's on, it's waiting for the market to recover.
Okay. So, just so I make sure I understand, we're talking about three entities involved in this potential project, an investor, W Holdings, and Vestar?
There are, W Holdings, which I represent, there's Vestar, which is the developer, and there's also our investor, who is a German entity, and she's in both parcels with us as a financial partner. So, we have ownership of both pieces with our agreement with our German partner, and Vestar comes in as the development entity.
So, then you represent Vestar as?
I mean, do you represent them as well, then, as a partner on that, on that parcel?
I am here representing everybody. I'm representing W Holdings, I'm representing our German investor, and I'm also representing the interest that Vestar has in this piece as our partner for future development on that front piece, which is the commercial one.
Okay. And of those three entities, are all three named specifically in the development agreement that currently exists?
In the development agreement that exists, Vestar is named as the development entity. W Holdings is not named, nor is our German investor. So, the agreement that we have with Vestar and our German investor is just not a recorded document. That's why it doesn't show up as part of the pre-annexation development agreement.
So, let me ask you another question. I mean, as developments go, obviously, obviously, we want development, obviously, we want, I mean, what city doesn't want additional sales tax revenue adding to the quality of life of your constituents, et cetera? And so, there's always that careful balance that we're trying to strike while obviously you see at night that has been very transportation-based, because that's one of our priorities as well. But is there, would you say that there's a population threshold that you need here in the city of Maricopa before that becomes even, you know, from, from concept to reality from a development standpoint?
Mayor Price, that's a good question. In the development agreement itself, it states that in order for us, that we're obligated to move within 18 months when there are more than 10,000 people within a five-mile radius. So, rooftops are required for a venture like this to make sense. So, if that answers your question, yes, there is a threshold on when we would see development happen within this piece, and it's based on growth happening in this corridor.
Okay. But, but if it's a five-mile radius, I mean, it's right across from Ock Chin, there's not really anybody living there, so, I mean, that, that could be, that could be forever in theory, right? I mean, it could be, it could be coming from the other side, too, but coming from the west, there's not a lot there, so two and a half miles in, there's nothing there, really.
What I cited was just what's in the agreement in terms of our obligation to move, so there's a, there's a clock. We're obligated to move. Whether we move sooner than that or not, to be quite honest with you, that's where we look to Vestar, and they're the expert in the development side of the retail component.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, other questions, concerns, thoughts? Okay. Can I have a motion for this, for this particular item, whichever way the council pleases?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the recommendation for the east-west corridor concept, but I'd also like to have Mr. Burkhardt read into that motion the specific staff recommendations as part of that.
Very good. Mayor, council members, with regards to the White and Parker intersection with the east-west corridor, staff recommends council include the language and direction to staff to further refine this concept with the owner of the Eagle Shadow property in an effort to create an acceptable parcel configuration for the land located between the future east-west corridor alignment and the existing Maricopa Casa Grande rights of way. Staff will also work with the property owner, owner's design team to coordinate the future roadway intersection designs and alignments affecting the property. And then a second recommendation we also have is direction to staff to work with the property owner of the land at the intersection, Mr. Keeler's property, at the intersection of the proposed east-west corridor and 347, in an effort to create an alignment and intersection at 347. My apologies, I will start that over. Direct staff to work with Mr. Keeler and the property owners to further refine the alignment and intersection at 347 in an effort to create parcel configurations acceptable to the owners.
Second. So, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, can I have, all in favor say aye, please? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Takes us to item 10.6. This is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Maricopa declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk titled Chapter Nine Health and Sanitation of the Maricopa City Code relating to the enforcement, administration of the health and sanitation-related laws and regulations within the city of Maricopa and amending the code by eliminating sections nine dash one dash one through nine dash two dash eleven in chapter nine of the previously adopted city code and replacing those sections with nine dash one through nine dash sixty-one. This is for discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor, approve this motion 14 dash five three?
Second. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this particular item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Bear with me once again as we move to the ordinance here, the ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Maricopa adopting, Arizona adopting Chapter Nine Health and Sanitation by reference to sections nine dash one through nine dash sixty-one of the Maricopa City Code and repealing sections nine dash one dash one through nine dash two dash eleven of the chap, of chapter nine of the Maricopa City Code and providing for the severability and the effective date thereof. This is for discussion and action. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, approve this.
Have a motion. Is there a second from Mr. Wade? With that, it is an ordinance, so can I move to the roll call, please?
Councilmember Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Chappadose?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. 10.8, the resolution of the mayor and city council authorizing the imposition of a collection of fees for licensing and regulating the collection of transportation and disposition of recycling of residential, commercial, and industrial refuse generated within the city of Maricopa and establishing the solid waste fee schedule. This is for discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor, approve this motion 14 dash six four, or five four?
Second.
And a motion and a second to approve item 10.8. Is there any further discussion on this particular item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then finally, this takes us to item 10.9, or excuse me, not finally, I apologize, discuss and possibly take action on extending the agreement for the recycling and house, household hazardous waste collection services with the Environmental Concerns Organization, Arizona Nonprofit Corporation, which is approved on September 16th, 2004, and authorizing City Manager Gregory Rose to execute not any and all documents necessary to amend this agreement. This is for discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor, approve this. 10.49? Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Dennis? Sorry, are you caught up with us there? I'm sure we can do this one out. Can you turn your mic on?
I think, Mr. Mayor, I think we could. We had a specific E-session on that item.
Yeah, agreed.
And I think we'd like to go into that, if that's okay with council.
So, is the motion that's on the floor, is that something that I can have council rescind until after we come back to E-session, or how does that work?
I think we, was there a second to the motion?
There was a second to the motion.
Okay. I think we can hold the motion and go into E-session, and then council can come out and act on the motion.
Okay. So, if that's the case, can I have a motion to move to E-session then, please? A motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. We'll return shortly. Okay, let's go ahead and get started here. This takes us back to item 10.9. We apologize for the delays. Typically, try and have these E-sessions between work session and now, but that wasn't a possibility today, so. Anyways, that takes us back to 10.9. As you recall, there is a motion on the table, and it has been seconded. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that motion at all from council? Okay, seeing none, can I have a, what's that? No, there's no amendment, there's no amendments to the motion. So, that being said, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Well, mayor, if I might just add something on to the record indicating my intention to move for, with a, constructing an RFP to rebid this, this recycling-ish service.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And then finally, that takes us to item 10.10. I ask this be placed on here just based on the fact that from a scheduling standpoint in the past, just so you're all aware, again, we've typically rescheduled that meeting, the first meeting in January, because it typically falls so close to January 1st. In this case, it is the 6th. However, you got to figure that most city staff and oftentimes council members take that week off between New Year's and Christmas, or Christmas and New Year's, and so therefore to try and get, we only meet as a city till Thursday anyhow, so the reality of trying to get a council meeting together in less than two days and from publishing and everything else, it can be done, but I have to ask you, do you really want to come here on the 6th for one small item, or shall we just cancel it and push it back and do the one meeting and then on the 20th, thereby complying with the city code? So, I would leave that in your hands.
Mr. Mayor, I approve that we council January 6th meeting, and we have just a second meeting in January.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes our session. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Have a motion, is there a second? Seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?